To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I don't think you can motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, do I have a favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Before we make a motion on that, Mr. Mayor, I need to clear up a few things on the consent agenda on the meeting for the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
When we had a conversation on the North End Water Project, we talked about a timeline of eight to twelve months on that project. That timeline, as was stated in the beginning of that conversation, was for that project to go back through engineering, the bidding process, the work project, and the contractor to ramp up the work. At some point in that conversation between myself and Mr. Anderson, it got turned around to where, whether I misspoke or however it got turned around, that I said that Scott Mobley from Dog Lake told me it would take eight to twelve months to get funded. Scott Mobley, Dog Lake Construction, never said that, has never made that comment. Scott has been very upfront about his timelines, his time availability, and everything else. And if I misspoke or misled anybody in that conversation, I want to apologize to you, Scott, and Dog Lake Construction. I'm sorry for that, if that's what happened, how it got turned around, I'm unsure. At this point, I feel I owe you an apology personally.
Well, thanks, but I'm still going to speak my mind.
I would like to add to that a little bit, being that you initiated it. I did review that meeting today, the video of it that's been posted, and I just wanted to personally review that and see what was said. In that meeting, you never did say Scott's name personally, nor did I hear you say Dog Lake. You did multiple times.
Refer to contract.
Could I finish what I was going to say? Thank you. You did say multiple times in that meeting that you could not get materials for twelve months, excuse me. And so that, in terms of that was turned around, I'm not sure what you're referring to, I don't think anything was turned around or spun around. You just very clearly stated that you couldn't get materials for twelve months.
In the heat of the discussion, I just admitted I may have misspoke. I'm owning that mistake. If that's what I said, that's what I said. I own that mistake, and I apologize for that. Oh, that was not my intent. That's why I went over the schedule of events for that, eight to twelve months at the beginning of the conversation. That conversation, as you know, got very heated, and I may have misspoke. And I own that mistake. That is me, that is on me, I'm not blaming anybody else. That is on me.
Apology accepted, but be careful when you say it may have got spun around. It was just very clearly, but apology accepted. And keep pressing forward. And from my chair, we still have a very viable project, we have a very viable meeting. We've got a contractor on board here that's local, that's willing to do it. I would love to see Scott and Dog Lake get the job and make some money on this thing. And so it's, you know, I'll speak for a win for them, it's a win for Staub, who's not here. But I've spoken to Staub weekly. You know, they're absent from here, mostly because they're absent from the community, the powers that be don't live here. But this is a huge project for us, it's a huge project for the Staub's, and I think it's a huge project for the community, way beyond just the two of us, for sure, so... Let's keep pressing forward, and Scott, I'll look toward here and write you.
Okay, let's move on. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda, as corrected?
As corrected, and Mr. Mobley would like this entered into record.
Okay. I have a copy of it. Can I read it?
Would you like that read out loud, Scott?
No, I'll read it.
Staub's going to read it.
Okay. Now, it's approval of the consent agenda.
Second that with the changes.
Okay, do I have a favor?
Aye.
Now, when we move on down to public comment, citizens can address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda, out of respect for the council, and other than attendance, please limit your comment to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Public comment? Yes?
My name is Jan Kruh, and I live five, four, three, South H Street, across from the field that I believe the school owns.
Okay.
And I'm here to request a four-way stop at H and Sixth. Because...
H.
H.
Six.
Anyway, H, I've been married.
They're on there also. Wow.
And so you put a four-way stop on Fifth and H, and I really feel the need to have it on Sixth and H. There are stop signs on Sixth, but not on H. And H Street has, you know, I live right on it, and there is so much fast traffic going on H Street. I see it every day, and I can even identify to you the people that are racing, because I see it every day. And it's dangerous for the school, it's, you know, the children in the elementary school, it's dangerous for everybody that is walking on that street, and also, you know, the kids that ride their skateboards on that street. It's just a dangerous situation with, you know, the traffic that speeds through there. And I was hoping that the stop sign on Fifth Street would curb that, but now...
I thought maybe it would.
Yeah, but it hasn't, you know...
Well, it slowed some people down. It slowed some people down.
Yes, it has, but it hasn't slowed down the ones that constantly race on that street.
Okay, we'll look into that one.
And I'd appreciate it, because I don't want to sit there and see somebody get hit, you know? Including the deer, we have a lot of deer that cross over into that field, you know? And anyway, so I'm just putting my voice in for a four-way stop there. Another thing that I'd like to say is that, if I still have time, is that I have been vaccinated, and the reason that I wear a mask when I go outside is because the vaccination rate in this county is very low. And I'm eighty-one years old, I do not want to get the virus, the virus is still out there, and so I'm just saying that I'm towards to wear a mask, even though I've been vaccinated. So I just wanted to put that out there, too.
Okay, okay. All right, anybody else? Public comment?
That made a top. I don't know if I'm going to get this done in three minutes, but I'll try.
Okay.
I'm going to start out with this Lakeview Lowdown line of bullshit that was put in the paper. I don't believe one statement other than a few names are true, and I'm going to tell you why right now. On April twenty-second, nineteen twenty-one, Dog Lake Construction submitted a bid for the North Lake, or North Industrial Water and Sewer Extension Project with two options. One, for complete ductile iron sewer and water. The other for ductile iron water line and HDPE sewer line to the town of Lakeview for consideration. On April twenty-seventh, we received a letter from Anderson Engineering that stated in that bid that exceeded the budget and would not be approved. On July fourteenth, I was contacted by Michelle Perry by email, Dog Lake Construction, for a request to see if the town council were to approve the project, if I could hold my price. I contacted H.D. Fowler in Redmond, which was able to find some C-900 PVC pipe enough to do the job, which could be shipped by September. Their only concern was some of the fittings might be delayed, but should be available by October. Shipped by September, concerned things will be delayed. Well, likely the parts would be shipped by October. So I contacted Michelle and Ray Turner and told them what I found out, that my price was still good, but I could not start until November due to my workload. I'd estimated eighty days to do the work, and I felt that timeline was still accurate barring a big weather event. I've heard no response from the town council since that time. Regarding the article of Lakeview Lowdown, during both these processes, I have never said or insinuated eight to twelve months for parts. I have been told the reason for the delay is funding. I'd offered alternate ideas that would cost, that would cut the cost, such as install the water line now and the sewer lines as the funds became available, or drill a well for Greg Larson and put an on-demand pump on it to run his fire system. Again, no response to either alternate ideas have been addressed. I feel I've tried in every way to be upfront and honest with everyone involved in this project, and to be called a liar and dishonest that I was managing my workload is bullshit. And I do not appreciate the lie printed in the Lakeview Lowdown, nor the slander on Dog Lake Construction. So please, hold me accountable. I hope this will explain Dog Lake's position and then the confusion in this pissing match that seems to be going on between Greg Larson and the town council as far as Dog Lake's involvement in this matter.
Thank you.
I'm not done. I've got an email here that was sent to Greg Larson from my spire that he called to see if I was lying. They called me the day he called him. Greg Larson cannot supply any more pipe than I can and any better timeline. Please read every attached email to that. It's the same runaround bullshit I've been going with since the day one. And to say he can supply it in three days is not true. Also, the management of your contractors. If you want to manage contractors, see if you can manage this, because I've about had enough of this. I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more public comments? Okay, hearing none?
I guess I'd like to respond to that.
What are you going to do?
It appears, Scott, that you had sent a message back to Michelle and Ray mid-July that you could get materials. I'm curious why, in the last meeting, neither one of you spoke up when it was said multiple times by Scott that you couldn't get materials.
I believe I did speak up and say that we couldn't get pipe till November and that he would have trouble finding fittings. If I'm not correct, no, I did mention that. So let's move on, we're not going to beat this stiff tonight.
Am I dismissed? Yes, you can go, thank you, Jan, I'm happy.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
If I could, Ray, is there another item on the agenda in terms of the North Water Project?
It's not on the agenda.
Then I would like to hear where we're at on the project, if I could, in terms of where's...
I'm not going to discuss it tonight, because I've got a bunch on the agenda that I need to take care of tonight, and I'm not going to beat this stiff.
And so here we are, here we are again, there is no support for this project. It continues to get roadblocks. Can we... Where are we at? Where's the support? I've heard nothing from Michelle now from three meetings. Where are we at financially? It appears that the materials, we have a contractor sitting here, willing to do the project, and we can't even discuss it?
I'd say it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to discuss it tonight. I've got the workload on here as it is.
And Scott, this is what I've dealt with for two meetings, there's no support.
Well, that's fine, but if there's going to be a discussion, I would sooner it happen in front of me instead of this backward binding bullshit that I have.
Well, then you need to amend the agenda if you're going to have it.
We're not going to add it, it's added, we've got too much on the agenda for this. We can do it next council meeting, if you want to call Michelle and have it added to the agenda. We'd be more than happy to talk to you.
It's indicative, it's indicative of where it's at as a priority for the town. It's obviously lower than your entire agenda. Message heard.
Let's move on to public reports, Michelle.
Okay. So I received an email Thursday of last week from Annette Libray of Regional Solutions, and the governor has moved forward with signing for our part house bill or credit bill that was allowing us to have our fifteen million. So that's moving forward. I imagine we'll be getting paperwork for that either September or October. I know there's still a lot to do, but it's going to go through business organs, so that's that update. Governor Brown also declared Lake County in a drought. And I think that it will probably be in a drought for a while, so we may want to entertain thoughts of how we want to manage that as a community. If we want to conserve water, if we want to make suggestions on drought-tolerant plants, or maybe putting more plants and not a lot of grass, but I wanted to put that in your brains to start thinking about this. Water is a big deal.
I think we should consider autumn evening days of lawn watering in another time. I say that, I have one of the green ones in town.
I was going to say something, but...
Well, it's, I mean, it's the reality of what we're going through with this job. You know, I think that we need to come up with some kind of, I can't remember when the town like used to have to do that.
We did do it, we had to do that a long time ago.
Four-two, something like that, what it's...
I don't even remember the year or how, please don't ask me, but it was quite a long time ago.
Not having Jeff here to see what our...
That's one of the parts of my...
Ray might remember it.
Part of my thing is...
This is the new Jeff right here.
We've been checking the wells, they're actually in the normal range, or maybe a little lower.
How's the spring doing?
I'm going to really pump it out a whole lot right now.
Well, that's what he said two weeks ago.
Yeah.
The springs are good.
We got well six, well seven.
They're dry.
Yeah, well six and well seven will be possible all the time.
We probably should have considered some...
Something for down the road.
Well, so we don't get to the point where it's like, oh no, we got to do something right now.
Yeah, we may have several months of direct weather here for this.
Probably got about sixty percent of the community that that's...
Yeah, and that's what it must be, so you're...
That is for insurance, a lot of people aren't insured.
Okay. In your packet, you have the stats for the swimming pool. I am super excited about them. We had, in the month of July, one thousand six hundred and eighteen students accessing the swimming pool. It's really great to see the kids up there using the pool. Makes me very happy, even though we had to close it down a lot in July, more than usual, because of the smoke and the ash and all that great stuff. But you have the stats there. I'm excited about them, so I had them included. I'm working on dividing out the water and sewer ordinances, so I'll have those for you to review here probably in about a month and the water rates. So we're, I'm starting to put that all together to get ready for our new water treatment facility. We're going to be cutting a thirty thousand dollar check for Roundup, which was approved by the budget, and then having the mayor deliver the check to them or council president, whichever one you would like to have deliver, or somebody from council should deliver the check to the Roundup Association, because we, I love supporting that, they're our biggest event that comes to town every year.
Let me know when you give...
Okay. And then finally, I'm creating a partnership between the town and Oregon Technical Institute for our geothermal. We don't have anyone on staff who understands it in a thorough way, so I'm going to have the geothermal department at OIT come and help with that for the town. We're having some problems up at the prison, and we're not sure if it's coming from our side or the prison's side, so I'm going to have them come over and help with that. So that's what we've been, I've been up to.
Okay. Oh, my works.
Yep. I'm standing in for Pete, I'm Pete Fortson, standing in for Jeff Marshall. Want me to stand?
No, you're right.
As far as, we got the school bag farm cut and baled now, and he said it was sixty percent of normal, the harvest we got off of it, which is, I mean, we only have half the amount of water we could put on it, so... And then we painted some stripes and crosswalks. Let me see. Early in the month, we had an algae bloom at the pool, so we had to drain and refill the pool. We went up and fixed all the fences around all the spring line boxes up on the hill. And we did, had a vandalism at the kid park. They tore down the stall in the boys' room, and then one week later, they broke the toilet in the girls' room. Those are all fixed already. The Morello completed their paving of Stock Drive and Industrial, putting it over the cooling line for Red Rocks Cooling Line. And then we got a water service for Herrera over here, over on Center Street, was done. We had Ken the plumber, Lakeview Plumbing, do the plumbing from the meter end, I guess. We've been, like I said earlier, we've been checking the depths of the wells, and they've been beating around normal range. We have a little thingy drop down in the well, and it beeps when it touches the water. He says it's been beating normal, maybe a little lower, so... And then we had Oregon Health Authority comes every three years, and he said, "We had a water system assessment, went well, no significant deficiencies on our water system." And then, let's see. We have a great approval from OIT. We have to get an approval from the Oregon Health Authority to switch chlorine systems in our spring line box unit behind the swimming pool. We're going from a gas cylinder to pellets, so we have to get an approval from the Oregon Health Authority to do that. And we're, and apparently, when the contractor was here to do it the other day, he brought the wrong system, so now we've got to wait for a different system. He was going to put a manual system in, and we want an automatic chlorination tablet system, so we have to wait a little longer for him to do that. And that's all we have from public works.
Are you guys going to lock up the bathrooms at night?
No, we don't lock up the bathrooms at night, that would really help.
I used to lock them up every night.
Did you?
For two years.
I would think before somebody went off work at five o'clock at midnight.
At five or six, whenever I was done it, and the guys would open them up in the morning.
Would you be, if we locked them up, we leave at four-thirty, would four-thirty be too early?
Well, I wouldn't think so as long as...
Well, but you have night swim, too, up there, and people are barbecuing them.
No, I mean, a little bit.
A little bit.
Where they're tantalizing it, I mean, it wouldn't bother me.
You guys have an absolute right to do that, I mean, as far as the...
Well, we used to.
Yeah, so it's...
I would just post it on the bathroom door that they'll be closed from...
Yeah, if you put a post, you know, post it on the door that they'll be locked at a certain time and open at a certain time.
Right. Actually, as a facility, you have an absolute right to do that, so no legal issue to do it. Sounds good to me, I'd do it, man.
You can do that?
Yeah, we can make it work.
Okay. Uh, finance?
Finance, sure, so you don't have a July financial report in your packet yet, because there's still some tweaks that need to be done due to the new fiscal year and the formatting of the program. I want to give you good information rather than something that's halfway finished. So that's there. You do have your APs for the month of July in there, and that'll give you a good baseline. That's the first time that all of the payables for the month are the payables for that month. There's nothing that's reflected back from a previous month while we're cleaning up books, getting ready for audit. So you now know that that's approximately how much money we pay out every month to keep the town running, and you'll be able to look at his baselines going forward. Beyond that, twenty-twenty-one, the bank statements, the payroll tax reports, and I believe the messages and resolutions from Dawn have all gone to the audit, so we're going to be sending those to the audit. You're sending them still, okay. But that still puts us at about the same point we were at in January of twenty-twenty for our nineteen-twenty audit, so we are on schedule. You have in your packet the explanation of all of the proposals for the EMS Building Solar Project, which I hope to clarify a little bit of what was going on there, since there were questions at the work desk. And other than that, I think that you got it all.
Okay. Fire, Annette, do you have anything to add?
Nothing more, other than I can say that we didn't, I spent a few days up in Silver Lake on that. Fire up there, our department, maybe spent about six hours at the most. We was up there for possible backburn, and I think we was going to do them, and they decided not to, but they had more than enough structure help up there, so it's going to be good that we didn't have to go live.
Okay. Nine-one-one, Scott's not here, in your packets. So, I'm along with him.
Could I just go back to the consent calendars on there? With the minutes that we had, which it says town council regular session agenda. I thought I had two agendas when I was looking at the...
Sorry, I'll get that base.
Just if you could just change that.
Yep, I will.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a little bit of this dirt.
Good evening. Arma, the motorcycle rest, want to talk about fun stuff. I want to tell you, Scott, I was impressed, I own it, that was impressive.
If I made a mistake, I made a mistake, and I tried to...
I've never seen that before, I, tells me a lot about who you guys are.
Thank you.
I've been to a lot of these meetings over at Clon but I've never seen them, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Arma, I was speaking with my friend here, and he said that you, would you like to tell him?
Sure, I was able to, at the work session on this, we had our local insurance agent, who talks to city county insurance, need to get some, need to talk to underwriting more extensively. And what they determined is they would prefer seeing a liability insurance policy of at least one and a half million, and more likely two, multiple currents, just because the tort claim limit has been raised to one and a half million for negative sections. And they prefer seeing two, so you're not right at that limit, so it can get...
And they prefer seeing two, so you're not right at that limit, so it can get, 'cause the cost of defense sometimes can end up getting higher than that. So they recommended at the lowest one point five at the end, and then, but two would be where they would be more comfortable with as far as the, this kind of event. And according to his record, um, it's generally not a lot more extensive. Their difference between one and two million is not a lot anymore, as far as, he's, what he sees as far as events. The cost gets in when you've got events that go on for, it's the same period of time, a same, you know, weekend, or same two-day event. So that was their own recommendation. And then the folks that were not here, I did have a chance to redo the liability waiver provided. As long as we specifically named the town, town employees, town council, town agents, volunteers, et cetera, I believe that waiver is legally sufficient. If that's what's being used normally in the digital industry or anything else, and their insurance company is satisfied with it. They're the ones defending on us based on that waiver, so I'm comfortable with that. As far as, as long as we had, you know, town, all this town staff, town, you know, this general kind of a category, and I can work on that with them to add that little paragraph in there. I'm, I'm satisfied with the sufficiency of the waiver that was provided as far as protecting the town for. Um, something else we talked about, too, for the other folks that weren't there, it's recreational immunity, it's not a liability force because this event is charging for access. Like our parks, for example, somebody goes and gets hurt in our park, not the swimming pool park where we charge, but just goes to the park and gets hurt, there's absolute immunity. But doesn't really matter because if they can figure, they can figure out a way of saying that a town employee was negligent, that recreational immunity has been abrogated by a Supreme Court decision. So even if somehow we made the event completely free and everything else, that wouldn't do any good because somebody would find some way of trying to tie it to a town employee did something negligent. Even if they couldn't prove it, it still makes you have the lawsuit and everything else, so that's why insurance company is necessary. And again.
How many years have you guys been doing this? You said by twenty or thirty?
Years.
Okay, have you ever turned in a client to, to a town?
No. No, we've never had, and the motocross, I, I can't speak for road racing and some of the other venues, but the motocross, cross country, and the trials events, we've never had a lawsuit. I can throw that again today.
Yeah.
Uh.
So the least amount of insurance would probably be okay, right, like one point five?
They could live with that, they would prefer to, but they.
Well, yeah, they wanna sell it.
And, and, and remember, well, remember, though, they're not, city county's not trying to sell it. This is from our insurance company, they couldn't provide, they don't provide insurance to events. So this is our insurance saying, this is what we'd like to see as far as the multiple occurrence, at least one point five minimum, and preferably two. Just because, like you said, the cost of defense can get in there, or even that, that ends up counting towards the maximum limit. So that's their, they said at a minimum of one point.
Well, the purpose of the insurance is like they're on, you guys are on a trail.
Track.
A track.
Well, a track and then a trail and.
And it's, and it's built wrong or something, right? That would be negligent on us, but if a guy falls off a bike and gets hurt, that's his fault, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And every, all of our, everybody in, in our, Arma, we have to show proof of insurance, you know, for. Everybody that comes to the gate signs reading everybody, unless they snuck in, that's negligence. It kinda gives you a walk, but everybody's not, you know, even spectators have to sign when they come in, you know, the release of liability. I'm, uh, I'm not opposed to one five, we've been skating on one for quite a while, and that's not a lot of money anymore, so. At the end of the day, it's just money, I just wanna go have fun, man, I wanna do something for the town, you know? Um, I would say this, that every, every penny out of it more I have to put out, it's just, unfortunately, it's just gonna, you know, I wanna donate all the money in the city to them. So the Boy Scouts, the, the pool, wherever needed. And, uh, so, um, it's, I'm just finding out that, you know, it's been a couple years since I've actually done one of these, I've, I've supported a lot of them. And things are just getting more expensive, and I, I didn't realize that. I said, I think you guys, I thought it was gonna be a short thing, Don, for us. It's kind of a long-term goal of what I'd like to see happen here, you know, it all comes down to, you know, let's build on things. Let's get through the first one before we start talking about the others. But what I really need is, um, is you guys to say, let's do it, and I'll get started. Insurance won't happen until after the new year, we won't, I won't buy insurance this early. And the other thing I would say is, uh, you suggested a company, we use a company out of the Bay Area. I would prefer to use everything local, so I'm gonna go talk to your guys' insurance people. I just talked with, you guys suggested, you and you. Were you here or not? No, you guys weren't. To the trophy people across the street, I didn't, um, so I think we negotiated a deal there, pending, you know, approval. I just need you guys to go like this. And I see us talking often, I, transparency is, is a must for this. I want you guys to know what's going on, and, okay, it's, it's important.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the motocross events.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion taken, second, go in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved, go forward.
Right on.
It's a people.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on down to movement, thank you guys, and thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, I'm Adrian McLean, I'm the new director of Lake County Chamber, for those of you that don't know me. Um, I'm on day two, and I'm here to ask for your approval for the Labor Day parade. Um, in front of you, you have the map, it hasn't changed any, I didn't adjust anything, left it right where it was. The only difference is this year, we're teaming up with the Desert Cruiser, so my group doesn't have to run around with our chickens, chickens with our head cut off. I'll have the Desert Cruisers backing us. Um, as soon as I can get ahold of Sheriff Taylor, who's out of town today, um, to sign this off, I'll send all of this to you guys, the insurance. It's already taken care of for the town of Lakeview, it's right here. So you guys know. Clear, favorable at Lake. I just need one more signature, and then I'll get a copy to Dawn. And it's, you'll have the whole packet, so that covers ODOT, ODOT's approval, um, and everyone. You have any questions?
Have you got ODOT's approval yet?
I did. It's the first page before that one.
So we're just waiting on Sheriff Kevin?
Yeah, there apparently was something in North Lake today, so he was out of town. So as soon as he's in tomorrow morning, I'll have his signature, send it back to ODOT, and then I'll disperse it to all parties, and you guys all have that.
It is council's pleasure to approve it, you basically do what you've kinda done in the past, which has been, we're approving this subject to Sheriff Taylor's approval. That's been something that you guys have done fairly consistently when you haven't been able to get that part of it.
I do apologize, um, in the future, it'll be done roughly six weeks ahead of time due to ODOT's approval, but they are pushing it through since yesterday was my first day at work. And, um, I need it approved and all parties on the same page before I meet with the Sheriff's Department to close the road.
I want to make sure we have any problems signed in.
He's already technically signed it off, but they need another paper signed, so I just need one more signed.
Do I have a motion on the board for the parade?
I'm making a motion to accept a grade out of provisions. I'll second.
Motion taken, second, go in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you.
I'll let them look at that.
Okay.
I'll try to hack it.
Well, you can sit right there.
I'm a girl.
Can I have a little your time outside?
Absolutely.
Excuse me?
Move on down, town hall hours for Labor Day weekend.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Maybe we should just be open all weekend, in case anybody wants to pay their way.
Thank you, guys.
Are you following?
Same, same, I'll try to be here all weekend.
Are you following, watch the desk call?
Thank you so much, I think I heard it'd be a little short-handed because of things that are going on out there.
What has happened in the past?
Um, they got off.
Closed Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Well, yeah. I have pigs this year, two of them.
Yep.
So, so what are my kids' house pigs?
What are you requesting?
Fri-, Thursday, Friday, off, also with Monday, for.
The whole staff?
Because how we're, we, yeah, how hard we work, Thursdays are here ten hours, so we were just hoping for some trip either.
So you want the whole office closed, Thursday, Friday?
Yeah.
Up for five days?
Uh, well, remember, open Saturday and Sunday, so technically all weekend.
One Monday's if I go all days in the four days.
So technically, too. Technically, in capital letters.
What did Michelle say?
Michelle said yes. But words in her mouth.
Will there be anybody like on call, like emergency number for people to reach, and something closer to the door?
Uh, I'm more than likely will be working, uh, I have so much to do. Um, I think maybe we could do like a half-day, um, on Thursday and Friday. Fridays are dead in the afternoon anyways, we hardly get anybody in. So if we could do half-days to allow for staff to go to the, uh, Roundup and the fair and all of that stuff. Um, I think would be a good thing, and then of course Monday will close at holiday. So I think if we could do half-days where we're open from, like, in eight to one, and then.
Close from outside?
Yeah.
Close to the outside.
I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
Okay, 'cause this would be my first year of working with Roundup going. So I don't, I don't know what the traffic is to the town at all, I don't know if everybody just packs up and heads over to the fair or not, so.
Yes and no?
Yeah, I'd get far of them, dude.
Or there are the cases.
So if we can do half-day Thursday, half-day Friday, close Monday.
Well, we're always closed on Monday, um. So what does the council say? What do you think? Do I have any questions?
I think that's fine.
I think it would work, 'cause, as Michelle said, she thought she'd be here, and you haven't been here anyway. Just don't, I will see Dawn, apparently.
No, I'll be rolling with the pigs.
Thank you, we'll be happy to stay.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll see Shannon Vio out there, but one with pigs, too.
Confirmed, I.
They, uh, update public records request policy?
So that's in your packets. Ours was extremely outdated. Um, and I personally haven't seen one since I started, so I felt like it was time to update. And we have a lot of, uh, stuff going on at town hall that someone may want to access the public records. So I felt like it was time to come together with a new request policy, and a new, uh, resolution, and a form.
So I would look at this earlier, that, um, on schedule three point one, the records on compact discs, that, that's pretty dated. I would say we could probably get rid of that.
Okay.
Kind of like a USB drive or something, just nobody's got CDs anymore on their computers. Hold your computer. Mine.
Two thousand eighteen. Okay, thank you, I, I will amend that.
Okay. Let's move on down to Resolution one 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 eight. Captain Lakeview adopting public records request policy and procedure. Do I have a motion on that?
I move that we vote on Resolution number twenty, twenty-one, one, one, eight. A resolution of town of Lakeview adopting a public records request policy and procedures, excuse me.
Do I have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it, with the change that the chair recommended.
Pardon?
I would second it with the motive where the changes that Shannon recommended.
Is that on the, on the?
On the book.
Resolution, oh, I, I thought it was on the, yes, information, please.
Okay, motion taken, second, go in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on down to Resolution one 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 nine, Red Rock Amendment.
This is formalizing, um, the water and sewer extension and the increase in the rate amount.
Put the cooling, yeah, cooling water as well. The cooling water system, so the word Morello just finished?
Actually, they didn't finish.
No, I mean, that, sorry, the paving didn't finish, they're not totally done yet, this is the next phase.
Yeah, they're still responsible for testing pumps, but.
Correct.
Yes.
And how, how is that, Jeff, working with Red Rock, not up and running, stated? How long is Morello on the hook for? Let's see a question.
Cause that is, that's a little different scenario than when we started on.
Yeah, I mean, our hands are tied, we can't control it, we're all still in, but, you know, there's some liability there. We can't test those pumps, you know, we can't hold, no, a hundred percent of liability tests those pumps for years from now, if that's.
Correct.
Red Rock to get going, and you can't test those pumps, so you can pump sewer water down there to run to the cooling jobs.
So what may make sense is to temporarily, I think, if the pool is ready, it might be good to talk to Red Rock and see if we can't do a test run of just putting, putting stuff into that, because remember, we're on just, everything that go, we're on the edge of the system, you know, where it goes, wherever. See if we can do a test run on it, impossible to just at least do something or get the pumps to be tested and then, whatever.
Okay.
That probably, the easiest way is doing is have us reach out to Red Rock and say, look, we, bug this thing up, we wanna, we need to have a dry run on this. Are we able to run it through some places?
Is that up to an engineer to do that? That's what I, you know, would think.
We are putting out a request for an engineer to finish that project. And I'm holding back seventy-eight thousand and some change for Morello for their final payment until we can get a final sign-off from an engineer that we select. And then they do a test run, make sure that everything's working properly, and then train us on the system.
Okay, was there some changes that the DEQ recommended, or, or not system as well?
On the DEQ?
Did the DEQ have some recommendations for, uh, like the D or something, or not?
I don't recall, I know that they were, they approved the plans, not funding it through, um, with no problems, but I, I don't.
I thought there was something else, something.
I don't recall, but I can.
Remember, they wanted some testing done, was the.
I think they did some pressure testing, they made, ran some cameras, threw as long as.
Right.
Is what they did.
Yeah, there was testing on their end for certification, so.
And I think that that was all approved, if I remember correctly.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Do I have a motion on one 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 nine?
I'll make a motion, case through Resolution one 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 nine.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Go in favor? Aye. Forward? Air none, okay. Let's move on down.
All right, this is the latest, our latest mag, I wanted to share it with you guys, and that'll be out of your hair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you later.
Move on down to. Improving solar for the, we fired this back.
So I had Shelley, uh, walk this out for me, so you could see it. Um, because it's a big thing to swallow with just big price tags, um, so she has been, um, spearheading this. So the questions, we can both answer, but she has more of a feel for exactly what to, how to answer your questions, so.
These three packs?
Right, those are the three packages, and then you should have gotten Mr. Page's report from me that explains what our parameters were and where we started with pay the electric bill every month and do nothing, and how much that will cost us over the next twenty-five years versus how much we will spend if we go solar on the building. Um, all three of the bidders were brought to us by, um, the Oregon Energy Trust. So they've all done projects in Oregon, they all had good references in Oregon. As I stated in my report, the most glowing from the references that I knew personally were for, um, EcoSolar, who also happened to be the least expensive person. Um, there are three solar businesses are located in, um, Plymouth Falls. EcoSolar, A and R is in Seattle, and Blue Sky is out of Arizona. So EcoSolar is also the most global, and has already done a number of projects here in Lakeview. Whereas it became obvious that Blue Sky people had no clue where Lakeview was, they kept sending me a med for, um.
Did Echo do the library?
Echo, we haven't done, yes, Echo did, I don't know that. Echo did the Rackham Theater, and Echo's done some local projects here, I don't believe they did the library.
They did, most of, off Lord's House.
Yeah.
And he said, I talked to him yesterday, and he said he hasn't seen electric bill in five months. Um, Joe Simpson, uh, and he got it installed on his house, I haven't talked to him. And there's one other person here in town that also hasn't been done.
Both A and R and Blue Sky felt that we could negate our electric bill basically to zero with seventy-eight megawatts. And EcoSolar looked at the rug and said, you guys are gonna want to grow, and it's not that expensive, let's go ahead and do the ninety-three that we can get up there. So that gives us more space already built in for generators or whatever else we want to run.
And I called Shelley the other day just to get clarification of all this and it makes sense to do it. It just absolutely does.
The biggest thing, the biggest question I have, so I wasn't here on Friday, was will this project support itself financially?
Yes, it will. We put 200,000 into the budget under special projects for 911 and FIRE anticipating wanting to do this.
Okay.
So that gives us the money to pay upfront EcoSolar to get it done, done, as well as a little bit of extra money to do river repairs and things like that that might come to light in the process of the project. They think that once they get the go-ahead from us to move forward, they should be able to have the project finished and completed up and running in under 90 days. And they do all the negotiation with Pacific Power to have them do the buyback program so that they bank the power that we generate during the summer and don't use so that we can run it out during the winter and basically have a $12 a month electric bill for the privilege of being connected to their grid.
And the other question I have is I spoke with David Anderson, I believe it was last year, in the other report. And they had, City Power has some grant programs to help towns and schools with solar.
And I called Pacific Power about that. And at this point in time, they're only doing 501(c)(3) and they're not. So that doesn't count, although we do get, it shows a $19,000 grant that that is the Energy Trust buyback. The other thing that you can get if you're a nonprofit is a 25% federal tax credit and we don't qualify for that either, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, those things, Scott, if it snows a whole bunch, you have to get all that off.
Depends on the angle of the town, like how much, a lot of that should slide off.
When I talked to Solar about that particular project, they said that the EMS building roof is just ideally suited for this. Probably 90% of leaves or snow or any other thing we're going to get is just going to slip off of these without a problem. So in addition to that, we will have the capability to see in real time the production of these panels. So if there is a problem, we can get somebody up there from EMS or whatever to clean up. So there's snow in the winter, there's dust and all sorts of stuff in the summertime that could interfere with its production, but we'll be alerted that it throws a panel down.
In winter times, it will be low production time anyway. I mean, it's the summertime is where we're going to get all of that.
And they have a plugin as a part of their system that's just a part of this package where we can put, look at our sustainability or look at our solar output on our website and people can click on the town of Lakeview website and see in real time what our solar panels are doing. And how much we're interested.
Yeah, it's all that long, so. They ask.
Yeah, the other thing that Shannon mentioned that I want to bring to your attention is I use 1.5 CPI on my projections. The people making the solar proposals use 3% because that's what they were getting from Pacific Power. So instead of saving $300,000, the projections from the solar companies or it's probably giving more in the neighborhood of 5 to 750,000. So I'm, I'm always conservative. Trust me for that.
You guys are.
How long do they last, like 10 years?
Well, they're guaranteed, they're guaranteed for 25, Jay.
Pardon?
They're guaranteed for 25.
Oh, wow.
And if they drop below 92% efficiency at any point during the 25 years, they will replace them. And that EcoSolar in particular has had solar panels that have been up and running for 30 years plus they're still generating.
Echo's one out of Plymouth.
Echo's one out of Plymouth.
And from a legal standpoint, they are a little bitter. So it's kind of a, as long as there's, everybody's kind of equally qualified, that's kind of generally who you go with. So if, if the council's like, you would have to obviously, but.
Well, what's nice about it is that while everybody else's energy bills go up, ours walks in. And that's what it is. It's, instead of watching those rates inch up year after year after year, we won't have to worry about that. I've also asked, if you do select Echo, I like them. I've asked them if we could do a master solar plan because we have all of our wells are 24/7 and we spend a bunch of money keeping those running. And so I'd like them to get new master plans that maybe we can do a little bit each year to get all of those off the grid because we're spending about 20,000 a month.
So here, I just had this thought, but if we put more solar panels on the EMS building, could we use those towards some of the, to offset some of the power for the wells?
No, because they have to be interconnected, which means they're either across the street or they're in a close location. So I think most of our wells are independently done because they're not too close together. But I do think that it is a good thing to start looking into to see how much we can save.
People want to hear something, yeah.
Yeah. If we did, were able to do one per year, we would eventually knock down our outgoing money towards power.
Who cares whether it'd be in these right now or out on the west side of the road department. It's gonna be really easy to.
The other thing to look at is solar technology is at the point now where it is a value add to our property. So it increases the asset value that we're holding. And it's a capital improvement that we can advertise over a number of years as far as our financial audits are concerned. So it will put us in a better position in that direction. And it will really show up that the council is making significant strides towards being physically responsible with making sure we have a long-term plan. We're keeping things like that going. Okay. Laugh at you during.
No, we're laughing.
If you guys can clear that, we have something else.
Don, Don, you need to get a new recording.
New batteries.
No. Yeah. Battery went down. That's a brand new battery. Well.
Not anymore. You need to do lighting.
Okay, moving back to the solar, I need a motion on that.
Hold on, hold on, please. Okay, now you can talk.
I'll make a motion to do the solar installation for the dispatch center using EcoSolar.
Do I have a second?
Of EcoSolar?
Eco.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
Okay, go in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved.
Yay. Got it.
Counsel, did you have anything you want to bring up?
I need this one.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Yes, I need this time before you all leave, please.
Okay. And we will adjourn the meeting at 6:58.